Back from recess at 11:00. I didn't say when we were going, 11:20 before. I have 11:25. Back into our regular session this time. Down to department updates.
Would you like me to talk?
Sure.
You want me to come up there or?
That'll work. Whatever's complicated for you.
Okay. I have, um, I have not a long list. Okay. I think I will start here so I don't forget. So, uh, just a quick update on the Brownfields grant that we drove to the EPA. We got confirmation from the EPA Grants Department that they did receive the grant and that they'll be reviewing it in March, or excuse me, February slash March, and they'll have decisions in late April, early May. So it's just, but it's there and-
It's in the system.
It's all, it's in the system. It's always good to know that they actually acknowledge that it's done. Um, working with broadband, there's been several things that have come up that are all, are all good things. One thing that is a little bit of a challenge, I just got a notice this morning from, um, the Lake District Hospital I've been working on with another organization called OCHN, and I'm sorry, I don't remember what all the letters stand for, but it's a, a health network that really helps hospitals, hospitals with their, any of their, um, needs outside of, uh, mostly technical kinds of things. Anyway, they have been working on trying to get some fiber from Lakeview to Altus, help with their clinic down there and help also, kind of a sideline that I think everybody's working on is redundancy for this area, which means redundancy, for those that might not know, means that if something goes down, like we've had six different, um, situations in 2017 so far where we have lost our internet connectivity outside, you know, and of, or here locally that has been created by something that happened outside. A couple of the situations were our road improvements on 140 going into the canyon up here. And then we've had like, I think, four that have been related to equipment failures with CenturyLink and some, and probably others. Not to pick on CenturyLink at all, but there's been things that have been way outside of our, our control. And that creates a lot of problems, downtime for our businesses. The banks were, you know, down, the county was down, et cetera. So there's several, um, organizations, entities that are really trying to work and figure out how this might, you know, we might be able to get this to happen. And that was one of the ways that Lake District Hospital really needs to have that Altus clinic that they have there. It has a lot of difficulty with downloading and uploading. And so that, that is, there's been a challenge there where an option that they were working on isn't gonna happen. But there are things that are being worked on through Hunter Communications and other entities to look at the southbound route. What we're looking at is hope, trying to look at connecting Lakeview to Tionestah. There's a fiber link there that then goes into Climb of Falls. And then going north, now that we have the link between Lakeview and Paisley, that looking at what would it take to go from Paisley to Lapine and/or Christmas Valley because there are links there. And, um, it's an ever-moving target. It changes from sometimes day to day, definitely week to week as to how these things might be able to be possible. We've been very fortunate in that we have gotten the attention and the support of Bellic's representative, Benz, and, um, and also, um, Ruski. And they're very interested. There may not be anything that could really happen in the short session with the legislature, but they can highlight this and they plan on doing it to, to, you know, for the possibility of, of joining with Business Oregon to increase some funding to help either with planning. And I kind of feel like we're planned out and we sort of know what we need and where we need to go. Now what the planning needs to be about is, the, the planning on the ground of how to go about doing it is kind of there. Now we need the money to actually do the infrastructure and, and get folks interested in it. So it's gonna be a combination, I said this all along, of patchworking, funding sources, and things on the ground to make this happen. So where we're at right now today is, uh, looking at US, you know, more USA DA funding and, um, the Business Oregon, Oregon Broadband Network put out a letter of information because they're preparing, they've got a small amount of money to do more, uh, planning. And we did get into the hop around that one and we'll see where it goes. There'll be decisions made and invitations to apply for the $500,000 they have in January. And, uh, so we're involved in that process and we also involved Regional Solutions also. The Governor's Office put out a request for, uh, information about the needs of infrastructure for broadband and we, uh, we jumped on that bandwagon too. So we're just, we're poised, we're trying to, to work with different entities about it. We've also been talking to, uh, the Oregon What Fish and Game because the summer lake area is really, you know, definitely has a huge deficit for any connectivity there. Uh, in terms of the Warner Valley, we're still waiting for USAC to make their decision about funding for, um, the E-Rate to the two schools. If that happens, they have just recently, USAC has just picked up and started asking questions, which means now it's, they're actually looking at it and they're making decisions. But we don't know when that decision's gonna be. It's been almost a year since that application was submitted by the Education Service District here for those, that funding. Hunter Communications has put in a bid for that and we're accepted. If the funding is accepted, they probably would be the one that would do it and they have agreed that they would lay extra fiber to help the community out there because the CenturyLink, T1 lines are exhausted in that area and to the point of folks just barely being able to upload and download anything out in that area. So that's kind of where we're at with all of that. You know, keep going, it's, stay tuned, but I'm sure you've got questions or thoughts.
Well, one kind of a question, Ginger, and one comment. I really appreciate you talking about Representative Vance and Ruski. As you know, I reached out to them. I haven't been involved in this.
Right.
I'm a firm believer, you don't know what you don't know, and I don't know a lot about what's been going on.
Right.
But with that said, and then forwarded a lot of those emails to you and then stepped back out of the way and Representative Ruski reached out to CenturyLink governmental affairs folks. I know there's some things that they're gonna be down to look at later on and work with you on that. And so just throw that out there. My question is, cause when you mentioned, when you started in about our outages and I've been, you know, affected by it personally too.
Sure, everybody has, yeah.
Well, that was the interesting part is not everybody has been because of the other providers. And a lot of our business community and I think even some of the banks go with someone else's CenturyLink. And I'm just wondering if we really, really looked at some of these, and I don't know what all the different names are. I don't know what Melanie, what you folks had over at Howard's for internet service.
Charter.
Charter? Down at Fayetteville, the day was really out here a couple of months ago when they did the big cut. I went down there and I said, I know you can't pray anything for me, and they said, what are you talking about? We're up and running. And they were on something else. So I, I, that's more of a question is to-
You know, it's really interesting. Most of the information with these private companies is proprietary. And we've asked the question, uh, mostly of CenturyLink because they have been the one that has been most involved in, in the outages. But it is, we don't necessarily get, um, we get deflected information. I know that sounds, um, I mean, I just, just honestly, we don't get good information from them about what is actually happening. When one of the outages occurred, initially it was some sort of a connectivity issue in, uh, in a box somewhere here in Lake County. Then, then we were told it was in Portland and then we were told it was in Seattle. And it has moved around and we don't know. Now, Fire Service out of Climb of Falls, all of their clients were up and going here. But that's because they're doing a microwave from someplace else. They're not depending necessarily on fiber here locally. So there's lots of different ways that the, that connectivity gets here. And there's, you know, LS Networks purchases some of their fiber use from CenturyLink. I'm not sure exactly. I think Charter does too. They all come from different places. There's different companies that bring the, the fiber in or the connectivity in and out of Lakeview. There are some places where, you know, the, the larger companies like the county and the hospital and the prison depend on different ones for, like LS Networks, I think is the one that's dependent, that, that serves the, the prison. So it's very confusing. I have been working on this for three years and I still don't have a roadmap of all this.
Well, this, this is what's gonna be interesting, just for a quick discussion, you know, because of the, the new line that John Day may or may not give in Lake County. But John Day from Burns and Senator Ferrioli was the instigator-
Right.
-of the mechanism to make that two million plus whatever happen. So I guess for our legislative folks who do have the ability to really make a difference, to bring them on site and have the discussion, we need to know what we wanna ask them to do. And we have so many different providers and so many different instruments that can provide the service, whether it's the microwave or, or it's the actual light cable or whatever. So I guess I would like to see, see something that's short in nature that simply says, for Lake County and all of its communities and citizens, this is what we need. Not by who, but this is what our needs are.
What?
And then, then, you know, involve them in helping us make that happen.
And we, and we have been doing that. That's, we've shown, we know, we know what we need. We don't know how to get it because of what we're talking about. One of the things that, and I'm sure you already know about this, that has been really helpful that I think we've kind of pushed the envelope to have happen is that there has been a relationship that's been developed between Hunter Communications and Surprise Valley Electric to hang the fiber rather than to bury it. And that is, that is gonna really carry us forward in the future, especially to the Warner Valley. That's probably how that's gonna work. And Surprise Valley is being incredible in, um, offering, you know, to upgrade poles and do things to make all of that happen. They, they worked that whole link between Lakeview and Paisley with Hunter Communications. That would never have happened for the amount of money that was available if that hadn't happened. So that's a new thing that I think is gonna, it's gonna be one of the ways that we get this to happen in a reasonable, you know, with a reasonable amount of money. So-
So I have a question. I, I understand we need, we need the fiber and all that and, and redundancy and all that. I had the pleasure of, I remember being here at the works in that world quite a bit. And I spent time going out to the desert for life. I mean, I can't figure out why in the Plush and Adele, we aren't using microwave now. We've been two years or three years or however many years trying to get fiber there. Whenever I believe, and I'm not no expert, that through microwave and through mount tops and stuff like that, it should be relatively simple.
Unfortunately, it is not simple. And the reason why it's not simple is because most of the geography out there is, is interesting and it's cumbersome for microwave. Much of the, the, most of the properties or the physical areas where it would make sense to have a tower so that you would be able to do that is, is publicly owned. And the, the places that are, and I'm probably not gonna use the right words here. There's two places that are up on Fish Creek Rim that are prime to be able to do this. And they have site from Black Cap out there. Make a lot of sense to do it, but it's owned by BLM and it's, um, the habitat, the, um-
Airwind or Ranger?
No, it's, it's more than that.
Wilderness study area.
Yes, thank you very much. That's what it is. Wilderness study area and it's no man's land. I mean, you can barely even walk through it. Let alone put a tower. So there is a tower area in the Dale area and we have done a lot of work with ODOT and, um, the, you know, whoever it is, all the folks that have-
Well, it sure seems like the tower that's on Fish Creek Rim there can be easily covered Adele shoot down and back.
Okay, so-
And it should build Hitler Peak on Hart Mountain.
Okay, so except, on Hart Mountain, but that is owned by Fish and Game, that's the refuge. And they will not allow a tower there unless it's emergency services. There are some pieces of private property on Hart Mountain that possibly could be accessed except that they aren't prime, they're, where they're at is not prime. We've already located an area on, um, what is it, the west side, yeah, is it the west side? Across Hart Lake at the, at the base of, um, in the Narrows area, at the base of Hart Mountain that is owned by the Lane family and they verbally at this point have agreed that, to allow a microwave tower there. So what we're trying to do is get, and we're getting closer to conversations about agreements to put a microwave tower or something on that area where, in, just above Adele and Fish Creek Rim that would shoot across to the Lane property to a microwave there and then it would go back into the Plush area. But unfortunately, all along that would make sense to go along the rim up there isn't possible because of who owns the property.
So you're talking about Hart Rim or Hart Mountain?
I'm talking about Fish Creek Rim. At any Dale, just above Adele and Fish Creek, there's the tower area and there's several entities that have that. Unfortunately, the area is very small and the tower is exhausted from, you know, having too many, or has what it will, will bear. And so, but we've got some, we've got some things going on for access there. And it's taken a long time to get through there.
Which company is doing that? Because it seems, at least my, it seemed like for the amount of people out there, the amount of need as far as megabytes or whatever, it seems like it could be done fairly easy. But who, who's the lead on, what company is doing?
It can't be done easily if we can get it there.
But who's the lead that's doing that? Is what agency is contracted for somebody to figure out which point is the best one? Who is the one that's doing it?
Okay, we've had two, we've had two infrastructure companies look at it from an engineering point of view. One of them is CommNet, which is out of, um, they're owned by another, it's a subsidiary of something else. The owners, there's one in Las Vegas and there's, it's a big company, and there's another one in Atlanta, Georgia. Okay. And, um, so they came out and they took a look at it and they have kind of fiddled around about whether or not they want to get involved to actually do a build out. There's another company out of Portland that we've been working with that we just recently got a bid from that might work. And they are, they went back and they're redoing their bid based on information about the tower above Adele and how, how that's all gonna work. He's been, this person has been working with ODOT and some other folks about how to get their own power up there so it can happen. But that's only the infrastructure. The ISP that would, that would then actually provide the service, we don't know who that might be. We've talked to TNET, they're interested, Fire Service interested. There could be another one that might come in and be interested. What we're trying to do is get the infrastructure there. The ISP will come once that, do you understand what I'm saying? Once that is, it's possible to get it bounced around.
Is it safe to say that here in the county, who, who has talked to county in general, all these sites you're talking about up towards Adele and Plush, that we could map the best locations for the service to be provided from? But we run into a stumbling block because our local agencies that manage those lands object? Or won't support it?
You know, they have been incredibly helpful and in fact, they, we have gone out to the BLM and we've, and we've mapped it with their wonderful high-tech stuff here. They've been really helpful. I, I think their hands are tied especially with this Fish Creek Rim. But yes, that's the problem.
So, so my question would be if we could provide a comprehensive package of information about the best locations and some type of delineator, this, this, and this need congressional approval, and simply put that in the telecommunications staff for Congressman Walton's lap and say, can we make this happen?
We could do that.
We don't need to try and do it because they, they don't have the authorities, you said, Ginger.
Right, that's the problem.
So then we start searching for another desirable, but less than desirable location. And I know I could reach out to the telecommunications staff in DC and just simply say, we've got a package of information that will connect us, all of our citizens, to the outside world. And we'll, we'll frame it and it's a health and safety issue. And here's the agencies that we need to get these approvals from. And it's gotta happen from DC this way. I think we can do it.
Right. Well, and even, you know, the, the wildlife refuge on Hart Mountain, their services, I mean, they just practically have none. I mean, they have poor service in their office here too, but out there it's, you know, they have to come into town.
Well, we, that one for me, I, I don't understand that one at all.
I don't understand it either.
Because there's already power up there, there's already towers and things there, the road up there too that they use administratively. I think that one's possibly simple whenever you have the connections that we do with Congressman Walton's office. Get, get that through there.
Yeah, once we get, once we get service out there on the, on Fish Creek or whatever, the Adele, it, it is simple. It's, and it's not all that expensive. We're talking about maybe $350,000 to $400,000 to get microwave towers to bump it around out there. That's really reasonable. That's not expensive at all. That's the second, you know, if the fiber doesn't happen, that's the backup for it. And so we're looking at both pieces. We're not looking at just one.
See, I'm an office at site that, Ginger, just to be straightforward is, is we could already have worked on the microwave, maybe that in place. The fiber is driven by people that's gonna use it almost, you know what I'm saying?
No, I'm not sure I understand what you're saying.
Well, people, people aren't gonna come in and invest and put the fiber in the ground unless there's people who light it up and use it. It's money-driven a lot unless there's grants or there's other things.
Right, okay, yeah.
And so as we're, we're trying to get every grant we can to get that fiber in the ground, we're losing time.
No, we're only, no, the fiber to Warner Valley has only been researched through USAC. That's it. We've been putting most of our time and energy for the Warner Valley into the microwave issue. And the stumbling block has been where to put the tower. Once we have all of that together, you're right, it, it's gonna be really simple. But the, the complexity of it is getting access to a piece of property that will accommodate getting the, getting it from Lakeview to that area.
So we have to date and kind of a little bit of a game plan to maybe start to pursue, so.
Yes. We, I mean, we're, we're on it. It's just getting really slow.
Well, and I mean, a game plan in that if we can provide some information, I'm willing to do it. But as I told you before, you know, in the last contact with the Centurytell governmental affairs folks, I said I'm backing out, but I wanna, you know, I wanna help facilitate the frustrations you've had over the last three years to actually get into.
Well, and we've had a few of those conversations with some of the congressional staff and, you know, it, it, it's been very lukewarm, to tell you the truth. But that's okay, you know, we just keep doing it.
We got, we got a person back there in office that's high-ranking and there's value in the high-ranking. He chairs the highest ranking committee on the Hill and it's all about this. So if he can't do it, then no one can do it.
Maybe he's changed his mind, but yes, we can do it.
Well, I know he's changed his mind, Ginger, that he doesn't agree with what we're doing out here. But more importantly, in the interim, this is what we need to do to serve our citizens and provide that safety.
I agree, no, I agree.
Yeah, okay.
So we've got that.
Okay.
Um, one more quick thing in that is that Travel Oregon has decided that they would like to come to the, to Lake County, Southern Lake County, probably from Paisley South, to do a rural, what they call a rural tourism studio. And that is a marketing, um, adventure that they have done in the north end of the county. They did it, um, a year and a half ago in Lapine and in the northern part of Lake County. And what they do is come in and do, um, community meetings with, uh, community leaders and businesses and they develop a marketing plan for tourism. And they are, um, working with SCOEAD and with the Chamber of Commerce to make this happen. It's probably gonna be in April and May, June. And it's a series of workshops. And they're going to highlight the Warner Ski area and, um, our Roundup and Fair, especially since we are coming up on our hundredth anniversary for the Roundup and the Fair. And that doesn't mean that they're gonna exclude anything else, but they, those are the, kind of like the crown jewels of what we've got going on here, as well as the bike, the new bike, um, path, the outback bike path that they've, um, put together for the Warner Valley. So that, that's happening. We've got a steering committee that's been put together, about 15 different people. And it includes all, you know, lots of business folks and the people that are involved with the ski area and also the Roundup. And so we'll be looking forward to, to having them come and do that. They really have begun to see Lake County as a place geographically and that we've got some agrotourism kinds of things going on that could really be highlighted. It would be helpful for not only this area, but for the state. So we're happy about that. It's taken us about two years to, to help them see that, but it's funny, maybe sometimes it just takes time.
Well, thank you for those great updates.
But I'll talk with you more about the congressional thing.
Let's do, I'm gonna reach out to them in time and just, I'll, I'll start with Ryan. Just simply ask, are you guys ready and willing to step up?
Well, and it would be really helpful to me to know more about what they'd like to see.
Well, that's what I'll, I'll ask you first. Are you willing to step up and help us?
And what do you wanna see?
And what do you, what do you need in order to help us?
Sure.
Yep. Very good. Thank you.
Uh-huh.
Okay, we're onto more department updates. Dave and Denise.
Okay, so for ours, I do wanna touch on IT and transit, some of the road recon first. We've had completed GovDills. Our last vehicle has been picked up and they drove it successfully all the way to South Carolina, so that was amazing. It was our rail truck, so they could not be happier with it. That's great. And we've got our last check, so we are fully paid, so in terms of fleet budget.
Can I drop stuff off for that? Because you started asking me questions and I just went, I know nothing about this truck. I don't, I couldn't tell you anything. You just kinda looked at me. And then later I talked to David Huff, one of the employees with the road. When I was with Lake Road, we drove to Altus and we maybe got it up to 45 miles an hour and it was scary.
So they made it all the way to South Carolina?
Yeah, South Carolina, whatever they did.
They said it took a little tinkering, but they're super happy and it's gonna fit their needs.
I'll bet you it was one of those smoking abandoned deals. They drove into the back of a truck.
Very well could have been. So transit, I'm gonna keep it really brief, I know you're-
Back on that. What a great success all the way through that one vehicle you just sort of talked about. But the amount of dollars that came in, the way that program's working and advancement we've made in our fleet, thank you. Mel will pick that up and keep it going, but we're out in our fleet today. As Commissioner Shown said earlier, we're not going back to the old days.
I'm glad to hear it.
We, we were doing- We, we were doing good. And that's a prime example of dollars getting back to us through the circus.
I do want that, want to publicly, she's not in here unfortunately, but I do want to publicly recognize and appreciate Nikki Alves for all of her hard work. Because I did the auction and there's, you know, I kind of vacated the scenes and worked remotely. And she took on the role of getting all those vehicles picked up to the sign floor and whatnot. So thank you to her. And also she did some APs and whatnot, she was a great benefit, so.
Thank you for that, that acknowledgement is very important.
She's a great asset, so, so keep her. So in terms of transit, I just wanted to give you a just, I'll be short. We did meet yesterday with our chief providers, we're in process on our software install. We're a little bit farther behind than where I thought we were. I had a long meeting, actually I had a couple of them last night on, or last week on the phone with Mark or our rep with get their software. But we had a great, successful kickoff, what do you call kickoff meeting? I thought we'd already done that, but they are, our providers are currently going in and entering information. They're able to log in there and get their hands, hands on it and logging in information on all our drivers. So hopefully that will be done within four to six weeks, hopefully shorter time period. But yeah, and Mel, she's, she's working through it. She's getting a great understanding of how that process is working and what we're doing on transit. The other side of it, I could not remember if in public session I recognized back that I did go out for a grant for two new buses. We have been notified that we have two oldest buses actually still in use in the state of Oregon for providing Oregon transit services. So we are in process of sending out a grant application. It's been submitted, I've chatted with our ODOT rep, gave her a rundown on why we need those buses exactly, besides the fact that ones in two thousand one and ones in two thousand six. And they don't like them really even being more than five years old. So I'm pretty sure we're going to get awarded those. We'll go through the federal side of the RFP process to get those purchased. They'll get the wraps on them when they're here, they'll get the cameras on them. They'll come nice and pretty like our van, so I'm quite excited for pictures. I'll see pictures, I'm sure, I might not be here when they're delivering, but. So anyway, that's, that's transit. IT, we also had a meeting yesterday to kind of try to bring Mel and Commissioner Winters up to see down where we were on current projects. Commissioner Winters asked that I kind of do a little update. I know he's going to have some more to add to it. The lights are clicking real, real clearly, so any help you can do, great. In terms of Flowery Park, I wanted to bring Florida, Josh came and met with me on Monday. We were supposed to have installed their equipment two weeks ago, set up the point, but then no one showed up. Josh went all the way to Christmas Valley to do that, no one showed up for it. So he did get some other work done, but unfortunately that, that didn't transpire. So he heard from Flowery's at the end of last week. Flowery's, you recall the agreement that we approved for them? It was simply for housing their equipment. They were going to use a little bit of our, our public wifi, not our county wifi, but our public wifi to bring up one camera. They were going to house that equipment on their own DVR in our little closet that we have all of our IT stuff. That has gravitated to a minimum of four cameras. They want to hook it to our switch and they want us to manage it. That would mean that one of our deputies, when something happened, he would have access to that. And I, my recommendation I get my last day is in the past, but my recommendation is no. If, if they attach to our switch, they're attached to our IP address. They are attached to everything that is county. And that's, they're not a county entity. As much as I love Flowery Park, it's probably one of my most favorite parts. That thing is absolutely pristine, beautiful. And I appreciate what Flowery's do for that community. And I'd love to find a way to help them in this process. But hooking to our switch and our equipment, using our fiber for their, because now they're not using our wireless, our, our public wifi, they want to use our, our white, our physical fiber. That is really, really tapped at this point in time, just because we run our backups through that fiber line. So we can't add any more necessarily to that, we just don't have the capacity, so.
So I got to say something here really quick. I totally agree with you, Denise. We have an agreement that we did a couple of months ago. That's what we've got.
That's right.
But I'm more concerned and curious as to how they, what, what led them to believe they could do all this other stuff? What led them to believe they could talk to Josh? What led them to believe any of this? What?
I directed them to Josh because they are going to work with Josh, I want Josh on the side for that. Yeah, that part of it.
Then that answers that.
The rest of it, I've had no conversation with Flowery's on changing the aspect of what their request was. I, my request, I guess, to you guys is possibly direction to send Flowery's a letter, somehow be in contact, I think it needs to be in writing, just because we are, we did sign an agreement with them, so you kind of feel we need it with that in writing. And ask them to come to you generally with a request, with a road request.
Well, there's more to the story that you either didn't get to or you've never really talked. With the, I met with IT, Mel and Denise and all of them. It's a little bit more complex than that even, because there's liability that comes in. And our IT people said, it's not only that, it's twice. It's within health, our public health down there, so you have potential hip issues there. The other liability is, is the sheriff's side, the CEGIS. And we can't overlap that because that's huge liability there. But anyways, as what I told our IT people yesterday, and we had the agreement there, we agreed to house it in this little closet. That's all we agreed to. Denise allowed Josh to go up there and make sure it's housed correctly, not install it for him, but make sure it's housed in there correctly. If it's okay, I'm sort of okay with that. But then that took a contracted person up there for a whole day. So it's gravitated, so I definitely believe that we need to readdress this and point out what the struggles are for the county. So they don't think we're just not wanting to parry this. This is what our liabilities are, this is what, we can't do this. Dave has been involved just a little bit, he manages that building up there. And so we might even take a liability for HIPAA where there's a back door, just my thoughts. We may have to make a separation if we do allow it here. And we might not make that separation anyways. When I walk through there, Denise walks through there, Dave or any of us, we're not HIPAA certified. If for some reason there's something on a screen, we could accidentally see that. That's a hip liability. So where we are housing within that part of the annex, we may have to reconfigure of our, may, people can't go through the public health side, they have to come from that back room. So it's a little bit bigger than what I even realized.
A little too bigger than that in that he wanted one of our deputies to be the one in charge of, of the system. And I don't know if any conversation has happened with his department head to.
Well, I think the more important part here, Denise, you know, this is tremendously good information. I know for me, me and she have, and it's clear out here. I think we need to simply do what you just suggested a minute ago. We need to boil it right back to here. Here's our agreement in writing, here's what we said we'd do for a variety of reasons. We can't do anything more than that. If you'd still like to house the camera box in there, we'll work with any situation that we may not have addressed before. But beyond that, we're not going to do anything else, nothing else. Well, we can. And you know, if, if John's reps, because it would probably be him, but one of his family or want to come down and talk to us, you know, we can talk to them. Your point about in the sheriff's department too, who actually knows in there besides the one deputy? The HIPAA, the, the CEGIS, the everything. We, we absolutely do not want to open up that.
When, when your IT contract, IT person says you have liability more than, more than one whole.
I think it's, I think it's, it might not be a simple fix for what they'd ultimately like, they would like to do. And I agree with you, that part, that family, what they've done up there is tremendous. But there's a limit, and we signed an agreement, and that was our limit, and what we can do to help them. And I think we need to simply roll it back to there and just state it to them in a written letter. This is it. Sorry.
Sorry.
Well, we're not going to do any of this other stuff.
Yeah.
So. And it's my take.
So go ahead, I'll update. I think that covers annex, unless Dave's got some questions.
Okay, so we also reviewed our project, project list for the year. There are a couple of items on here that we're kind of changing the scope on. So one of those would be the move in the server room. If you guys know, we've been really, really concerned that our many, many, many thousands of dollars of computer equipment is sitting under sewer lines, sewer water lines, not the best area for, for our equipment. So we had talked in the past about switching all that computer equipment around the corner into adjacent room. Upon other conversation, which I super duper appreciate, Mr. Berman came up with a brilliant idea to possibly move those lines so that we don't have to move the equipment, because that's going to be very time-consuming, very expensive, and potentially dangerous to our equipment. The more you move it around, the more chance of, of damage. So I, I'll let Dave speak to his side of it, because he and I haven't even had a chance to have a conversation.
Is Dave's who are in water?
Yeah. Nobody's facility, he's in charge of the facility now.
Well, this has been a thing of mine for a long time. I mean, it came to me three years ago about why did we put a three hundred thousand dollar system underwater? It just made no sense from the beginning, but we still acknowledge everything. And then, and then, oh, what, a year ago, we talked about moving the whole server. What, once we did the remodel, we moved everybody out, we thought about, well, we'll just move everything over, da, da, da. Well, the more we thought about that, that's going to be pretty costly. That's also a risk too, by just unhooking everything and then trying to get everything back to the way it's supposed to work. Once you move that stuff and you unhook stuff, then it's, it's a nightmare according to the IP.
Work is a switch, man.
Yeah, oh gosh. So, well, it was when we were talking, I thought, well, what if we moved this here? And I thought of this six, seven months ago. And then it just kind of went to the side, you know, okay, we'll just move everything. Well, then Commissioner Winters got to talking with us last week.
I, I went down and talked cameras.
Yeah.
I came, I came up with the idea of just tearing the wall down.
Tearing the wall down. And we, and that's kind of what we had planned a year ago. We already had it all. Matter of fact, I do it out one time for Brad, but, but also a long story. The more I thought about it, I was like, well, I think it'd be easier to take those four lines and move them over six feet, where it's not directly, and there's still a risk. It's where it's at, to take the risk completely away, but be taking, put it on the third floor. That would be the best scenario, but that's not beautiful either. So anyway, I told Commissioner Winters, I said, well, why don't we just put the plumbing in instead of doing all this work? Because, yeah, it might have cost eight thousand dollars to move the plumbing over, but that's still a big save for half a million dollars, but we got to sit there and do it to the league. And even to do the remodel, it would be a risk too, because of moving the IT stuff. So I'm bad on my, but anyway, so I met with the plumber this morning. He's going to, he looked at it, he's going to give you some numbers, what we do. We're, we're not going to remove any plumbing.
Just leave it.
We're going to, we're just going to leave it, cut it off, discharge it, put all new lines six feet over closer to the main wall. We don't, we don't have a hundred percent plan of what we're going to do, where we're going to actually run it. Kind of got an idea, but once we get the numbers and once he does his, that. The, the thing that we got to work on, of course, is the asbestos removals for him to get to the access points that he needs to move to. So that's another challenge for us, but we're working on that. So I think that would be the best way, I think it'd be the best cost effective. It's going to be a hundred percent. I don't think it's going to be, I think it would.
I couldn't agree more. That's the, that's the, that's the fix. Move the problem.
Move the problem instead, you know, not move what that problem. And then later we'll remove the old.
Yeah.
When we do our payment, we'll be, we'll do it in the future. The whole building, so. And that's kind of like what we did down the hallway, we, instead of removing it, we just put a new line.
Yep.
That's, that's where we're at, that's what we have to do. Just where our hands are tied with some other issues. If you guys know.
Yep.
I just, I just read the AOC book, it was built in nineteen fifty-four, at a cost of over three hundred and fifty thousand.
And it's not burnable, what's that for?
And then, and, and.
When we're remodeling, it costs.
We're remodeling so much easier.
Well, that, that's all, that's where I want to go to. I know it's a little bit off the side here, but that's, that's where we're at now. Instead of doing remodels, it's, the plumbing is what we need to fix. That's our next big thing. And by doing what we want to do to server, that's kind of helping us get moving toward that direction of repairing all our plumbing. And if that makes sense.
The, I agree, Dave, because the, as we've really learned the last few months, our biggest exposure of needs is the plumbing. So I would totally agree, before we invest a dollar in anything else, we take care of that and have it totally done.
So that's, that's totally on hand.
Yep.
So also for this year, we had slated that we were going to convert our government three-six-five emails, or our email to government three-six-five. Microsoft still has, got some hiccups in that, we're going to say. So that is not going to happen this year, so that's going to free up about forty-six hundred dollars. The other project for moving the server room, we had budgeted at just over forty-eight hundred dollars. So planning, planning, planning. We've, we've known for a couple of months, for about six months, that we've got some kind of issues with public health. And we've been trying to figure out how to get that addressed. Mr. Brown has a great plan in place, it's about fifty-three hundred dollars, right?
Fifty-five hundred.
Fifty-five hundred. So, you know, with, with those two numbers freed up, it gives us enough. Our prior director was, was untouched, you know, so that's why we've been kind of, we've, we've known about it. But now we're really under a push. There's some audits that are going to be done. We've been notified that Oregon and Washington are going to be under that audit, audit process. We don't know that specifically they're going to pick us, we don't know that they aren't. And, and regardless of whether there's an audit or not, we want to do our due diligence to, to protect things. So we're going to be working towards moving that for public health. And probably, I don't know if you want to do it today or in the future or whatever, but move some project money around. It's still within the project's line item, it can be, you can do it with public health, whatever your guys' direction is for that. But there is some money already set aside from projects, and it's not going to be used, they can go towards that.
For, for the HIPAA thing that they told us about, we take twenty, twenty or twenty-five people.
Twenty-five.
And we wouldn't even come across that, but the other one, the executive service officer definitely needs that. I recommended our HR, even though I didn't think that would, that, Adel, I don't know, they know about our deals, but I think that'd be good. But anyways, if you could give Brett Brown a call today, would be just very near future to talk about the HIPAA side of it and public health.
We did let him know you were stepping on that, and it would probably be his best. Who, who you probably should actually be chatting with above us, I would say. Trying to word it correctly, but yeah. So it is, it is one of those things, regardless of what we do with that department, you know, and there's discussions and regardless of what way you go, it's better to have it all in compliance and good and healthy.
So I'm, I'm more than happy to talk to Brett Brown. But what I heard you say is that for a cost of five thousand and something, we can, we can take care of all the crap. Is that correct?
That, that's correct. And even if, if we go through, find out, we don't contract out public health, we don't stay as public health, we're still the public health, health authority.
Yeah.
And let's assume maybe we contract it out and they can go to the hospital. They're already set up, they already have that certification. So it's, it's money well spent, it's the right thing to do. thing to do. So I think I probably answered, but you'd sort of want to know about that, but there's also a need for you to, well, Brad Brown just talked, public health, as a whole, if you're with him.
Well, yeah, I, in order, it was, yeah, I'll do that.
So our other big item that was on here for this year, well, we had a few, I'm just going to let you know the ones that are done. We moved our cloud backup to Azure, Azure, that is done and completed as of August, actually, that was done. The sheriff's server, as you know, we put them in on our own server since they need so much space and to meet Sijis requirements, that was in the budget, through budget process, that transfer is complete. The healing on conversion for the assessor's office is in motion. They're doing a great job of keeping everyone on task and moving that forward. Dave Knowles is extremely happy with the process on it. They should be done with their current provider completely at the end of 2018, they're just going to use that as backup, just in case. We'll be done with the whole conversion and whatnot by the end of May is the goal. We'll be done running, everybody, everything will be corrected, all that good stuff by the end of May, hopefully sooner. But we are going to keep the old program in place for tax season, just in case something does go awry. We don't want to, tax time is a guideline, a guided date by date, so we don't want them to be sidelined in any way. So that's kind of the healing on update. Our biggest thing Mr. Brown has just been focused, focused, focused on is our disaster recovery plan. The disaster recovery plan isn't simply just IT, Commissioner Winters had to remind me of that yesterday, I apologize, I wasn't clicking yesterday either, evidently, disaster recovery plan is inclusive of all aspects for the company, if a disaster is to happen, regardless of what that disaster is, if it's flood, or wildfire, or fiber line cut, it's a matter of giving contacts, like Ginger was talking about, we never know what's going on when the internet actually goes down. Part of the disaster recovery plan would have those people in place to get a hold of them.
So doesn't this something that Daniel's kind of working on?
Well, and that's sort of what Denise is alluding to, that our disaster preparedness plan for our IT side of it, and they need to have within that plan what our call down list is, but it's not only Denise, but it's Dave, it's the facilities guy, if it goes to another level, it's Ron and Daniel, it's the OEM, director. So they're sort of, they need to know what the call down is, list is, and sort of what each person's function is.
What their roles, right?
Yeah, what their roles is, so, you know, if it's totally IT related, you're going to get a hold of Melanie, our IT contractor. If the facility's flooding, it's going to impact IT, they're going to get a hold of Dave and Melanie. We need to lay that out so that our disaster plan for our IT side is in place. So, yeah.
It's a, it's a big, big monster. He's got, you know, a number of staff working on it, mainly Josh, just because he is on site and kind of knows the flow a lot better. So just know that that is being worked on and it will be kind of forward. You know, it's going to learn a lot through that process, it's going to learn how, have Dave and herself work together, have Dave and Daniel work together, how everything fits, fits together, so it's all going to be, it's all going to be good, that's the message.
We're actually on the, on the fourth, but in February, on the safety, Daniel's going to come in and hit on disaster throughout the courthouse as well, the safety part of it.
Literally?
Hit it?
You what?
He's just being naughty. He's getting hungry.
Literally?
Commissioner, I'm getting hungry.
So I need to ask a question before we move on, and I'm going to be a little...
Go on, go ahead.
Well, I'm not going to say anything more than just with Brad Brown, related to the public health discussion. I'm thinking I know kind of what it's going to be, and I'm wondering if he would be better suited to talk to Dave and start with. I'm new to all of what we're...
I think if you, you take it together, I'll let you decide on that.
Yeah.
I think it's pertinent to what's going on right now on what you're working on, and it might be your shape, or it could just be whichever, whichever one.
Well, you know...
You're the lead on that, so whichever you think would be appropriate on my question.
So my last thing on that, just because I am departing, and I love to give our orders as I'm going out the door, I just want a reminder to everyone, we kind of sat down with Melanie and Josh and everybody yesterday, as we've said, and gave everyone a good reminder on the way things for IT are supposed to flow. You know, we all realize Josh is on site, that doesn't make him on staff. Melanie is in charge of our IT, and it needs to be made very, very, very clear, Melanie is in charge of IT. There's, we haven't ran into big, huge issues with buildings, but we have had dealings come through where Josh is on, and, you know, he's just doing his job, he's just doing what he thinks is the right thing to do, but he's not in charge of those budgets, and he doesn't realize that what he's doing is impacting, things have to be paid for, because we haven't negotiated that work yet. We're the ones that need to make the phone call to our other providers or suppliers, whether it's Belltel or whomever. So when he's calling for an outside party to come on the telephone, he doesn't realize that it's going to impact Dave's budget or my budget, and that they're going to charge us for it. If we were the one calling then, we would know that upfront, and we'd go, you're going to charge me $25 to do the telephone, and you're already in the building to do this, of course.
So that was about $45, thirty, yeah, okay.
Yeah, so, and it's not a big, huge thing, but it could be, and...
So who do we need to remind?
We need, and I...
I want to speak to this before you go too far.
You want me to shut up, is that what you're saying? Start talking now.
Well, she's leading into exactly what I wanted to, which is the board is, is yesterday it became very obvious, myself, I don't even know our IT policy anymore. Two times in the last two days, I've been told we have a policy for that, Brad. The policy has to come back to us, we have to look at it, and we have to put that out to our department heads and elected officials, this is our IT policy following. It's getting to what she's talking about, we might have to admit that a little bit, but we talked a little bit earlier. I've known first on our own policy that we've said, and I've had to be reminded twice in two days, is Brad, we do have a policy on that, because we, our heads and other elected officials have got comfortable in just grabbing jobs, because it was costing us money, inefficiencies and all kinds of other things. So I think, but Denise is alluding to address that mine, we have a policy in place today.
We also, can I add to that? We also need to be respectful of our contractor. Yeah, I'm going to do it. We have to be responsible to our contractor in the fact of Josh might not be his go-to person for that project. My contact, when I get those requests, I send them to Brad Brown, who is actually Josh's true supervisor. It is Brad Brown's responsibility to decide within his own agency, who is the best fit and who has time to do those. Just because Josh is on site, doesn't mean that one of his other personnel is...
Denise, share me something, you know, my call up on my work history over the years, you're hitting on, and we talked about this years ago. We don't give direction to contractors, employees, and we develop a relationship that we end up doing some of that, but what you're saying is exactly right. We're contracting with Actec, and the owner of Actec is Brad Brown.
Correct.
That's who makes all the decisions for his company to provide us the service he's contracted to provide us with.
And as a note to that, those requests cycle through your IT manager, not directly to Brad Brown.
Exactly. Well, that's the contractor rep, that's the contractor administrator to our contractor.
That's right. And, you know, it's just a reminder, I think a lot, I don't think anything is done in a vicious manner.
No.
I don't think it's meant to be degrading or demeaning, I think it's just, we forget, we forget that Josh is not an accounting employee, we forget that we do have Actec who manages that, and we forget we have an IT manager, that we need to be bringing those things too. So I just, as I leave, I just want that to be stated, and I just need for reassurance for Melanie.
Good one.
Yeah, that, that would be addressed.
The second part of this, as we had the discussion yesterday, is within our policy, we have a form that everybody who employs signs, that isn't yet signed, that we're aware of, and I forget what it's called, that's on the IT stuff.
It's a sign off sheet.
It's a sign off sheet, whenever they're hired on. So through our HR department, we don't always go all the way through the cracks here, Melanie and Denise have developed a meeting with Dave, but the recommendation was is they should probably go down and do like a 10-minute overview on IT policy with Josh, and that's whatever it's set up for this, set up, this is what's allowed on the computer, this, this and this, and it's done. And that's signed, we got to try and guess the number of employees, there's a lot of employees that have probably never signed this, it's felt all through the cracks. Go ahead.
Very agile, very agile.
Okay.
That's, well, that's not the, that's not the form, but yeah, she's on the right, she's on the right track.
That's a word that they use, I can even... And so another part of this is, I was at a very good meeting yesterday with our IT people, you know, they didn't have to draw any pictures or anything, I was actually engaged.
Did her.
But our ability to have a glance at user, the use of the computers, department to department, to get that information to our IT contractors, board of commissioners, snapshot, a monthly snapshot of this department, this is how much time they're spending off counting time they're working, computers hooked up to the internet or this or that, so that we could be starting to work at efficiencies within our operations in that department that our elected official will be able to know, well, you have six employees and three of them are spending this amount of time on Amazon Prime, not that that's happening, that's an extreme, for example, but they have the ability to give us that snapshot, because we have not implemented, as many times as Brad Brown has focused, you know, your exposures on the IT side, we haven't fully implemented our policy with this is what you can't do, you know? So I think yesterday was real eye opener for me, because we had to give back instead of our IT side and the use of our IT computers and everything, to the employees.
Well, I don't, in all fairness, I don't think the department head realized how much productivity, productivity is impacted, even an individual, you know? How much time did I watch TV yesterday? Wow, wait a minute, I spent six hours watching TV yesterday. It's same thing as the computer. You think you're on there for 15 minutes, you're actually on there throughout the day for two, two and a half hours. It's good for the individual to know that, it's better for the department head to know that, because that's impacting productivity. That's, you know, can I give that staff person more to do, because there's been so much time planned, and where are they going? That's, that's always been our big thing, you know, our, everybody knows we have that software installed, but we can track where everybody goes. We don't, we don't sit and watch it, we see no reports on it, but we can, and we should be doing that. We should be doing that, because that's, that's our due diligence in spending taxpayer money, is are we doing our work?
And there's a great pressure for me, it stays a little very, but the other thing on the disaster preparedness, Melanie and Denise probably will set up a meeting with them, and we'll probably have a lot of that discussion for IT, because disaster preparedness through an executive session is a lot, they need to be integrated properly. So we'll probably be doing that sometime in January, then they'll talk.
That's what they're thinking. So, just my last thing.
I think I covered most of the thing, and I got three minutes.
I think I've pretty much everything.
Three minutes to get to my grandson's.
Better, better, David. Gentlemen, thank you again, as I, as I did my very last thing.
Thank you, thank you.
That was his question.
And Commissioner, I'm going to make a recommendation for a recess this, in case we need to come back in the afternoon, we don't have no updated legal counsel, there's been other things, COVID to come over earlier this morning, I'll talk to our HR department, I think. So I would think a recess.
Tell what time? Two?
Yes.
One thirty?
And you don't have to pick around, but I would, I would like that, we may come back and just say, no business to be done, adjourned, but I'd like a recess for, in case we need to do this.
So are we going to reach out to legal counsel to see if they're there?
Our HR department should, our...
Well, okay, yeah, specific to that, I didn't know if Mr. Bailey had anything else.
I don't know of anything else he did say, it's going to be on my phone, so...
He said he was available, when I called him this morning, I called him right before our session to say, is there something you want us to be on, and he said, I just want them to be aware I am available by phone, if needed, so.
So with that, I'm going to put a program and come back, see if we come back here.
So we'll recess, or maybe tell Tuesday, is that appropriate?
Perfect.